I call to order the Waverly City Council for May 15, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Sir, if I could-
Yeah, we do have an amendment.
We've been working-
City Administrator-
We've been working through some of the legal paperwork for the bond issue and it's still not clean yet. So, we're trying to get through some of the past issues we've had. I apologize, but I'd like to have items number seven and eight pulled from the agenda until we can get a much clearer date on when that sale will happen-
On the bond.
The bonds, yes, sir.
Okay.
If the council would entertain that, please.
I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda as distributed by Carla Guyer to not do seven and eight.
I would move approval of the agenda minus-
Is there a second?
Second.
Just council discussion?
Just for clarification, if I'm looking at the right agenda, number seven is the professional service agreement for the pedestrian bridge. Eight is a five and, or 1.5 billion dollar bond and-
Is that right?
I think so.
I believe it is.
The online one has eight, nine, that's the-
Yeah, it's eight, nine.
It is.
I don't know if the written one's different than the online-
James, it was changed after we added seven as the bridge on ours that we have right now.
It's seven and eight is the-
Then it'll be item eight and nine, the two bond items, if you would. Again, my paperwork's not meshing up with the screen here.
Change from one on the screen.
Yeah.
Which one is technically right?
Yep, item eight and nine then, if you would.
Yeah, I think he's got the wrong one.
If we have that clear, city clerk?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no becomes our agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the April 24th and May 1st minutes also as distributed by our city clerk?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no become our approved minutes. Allow me to read a proclamation establishing May 14th to 20th as National Nursing Home Week. Whereas our beloved citizens of Waverly, Iowa, now residing in nursing homes, skilled nursing care, post-acute care centers have contributed majorly to the heritage, success, and growth of our community. And whereas nursing home residents of any age or ability are themselves living history and a precious resource. And whereas member skilled nursing care centers of the American Healthcare Association are holding events in observation of National Nursing Home Week guided by this year's national theme of the Spirit of America, which underscores the bond between staff, volunteers, residents that capture the American spirit. Whereas Nursing Home Week begins on Sunday, May 14th, ends on May 20th, 2017. Therefore, do I, Charles Infella, as mayor of Waverly, Iowa, urge everyone in the community to visit their loved one, friend, or neighbor currently residing in a skilled nursing care center to show respect for all that they have given to society and to us. Let no elderly or disabled person sit alone during this time to wonder if they are valued, appreciated, and loved. Visiting or volunteering your time at a local care facility is a testament to the community's spirit. Brings honor to our fathers, mothers, grandparents, and everyone in residence. And lifts the spirits of caregivers who value your involvement. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second, please? All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, so declared. We don't quite yet have our guest councilperson with us. If he comes, we will backtrack and give a special welcome. This time, I would invite any comments by the public on any items not on tonight's agenda. Hearing none, we move to our consent calendar. We have six items on tonight's consent calendar. They are a bill from WHKS for bridge inspections. We have a Stanley Consultant Bill for Parkway work. We have a beer license for Pizza Hut, a wine permit for renewed purpose, a liquor license for GT Miller Time, and cash disbursements for April to approve. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
It's, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no, approved. Regular business item number one is the purchase of cameras for the police department and their production storied. City Administrator, the public is always interested in proving our policing. What's at stake here before we consider this?
Uh, this is just the purchase of the first half of the body cameras that was approved in last year's budget. Uh, we came in slightly under the bids that we anticipated. And then the second half will be purchased in next year's budget after July 1st. So, again, first batch, first half is what this part is for.
This will allow us to-
This just furthers the platform of evidence that's available to the officers. It moves from, right now, all of our patrol vehicles are equipped with mobile video. This will stay with us and will help us when we go out of reach of the camera from the cars. So, it actually is going to add evidence to the officer's platform as far as defensibility.
And they'll be carrying it with them.
Yes, sir, at all times.
Is there a motion, please?
We have approval of purchase of eight Vista HD extended capacity wearable cameras. Vista Transfer Station Evidence Library and Vista License from Watch Guard of Allen, Texas, the Waverly Police Department for the purchase price of $11,945.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
I just asked, um, I know some departments have them, guidelines where you, you have them on all the time. Some departments, you guys are able to turn them off and on when you need to.
Right. That's one of the things with the watch guard system as compared to, we have Panasonic systems right now in our patrol vehicles. So, we're gonna be working off of manual operations at this point as far as switching on and off simply because they're different, uh, different companies. We will draft a policy, we're in the middle of that right now, that will establish when and where the officers do have to turn those camera systems on. Certainly, we're, you know, in private situations, they'll be able to take, take them off so we don't have any inadvertent recordings there. But, uh, we're, the policy that we're drafting right now pretty much mirrors what the international chiefs of police recommended body worn camera system policy is.
Okay, yep, just curious, I know everyone kinda does it a little bit.
It's, it's a intricate process.
Yes, yep, cool, thank you.
Is that coming before us to sign off on, or is that coming basically you and Rich?
Being just an internal policy in the police department.
Does it know, just within news also of, as other departments around the country have been doing this, one of those, one of the things that's popped up is would officers be able to review it when writing up reports and things like that as far as, you know, concerned on times of, whether they're, you know, corroborating their story or whether it's being held as evidence.
Yeah, that I don't know. I assume it'll be covered in your policy, what is and is not allowed and the viewing. It'll be just retained.
That's correct, James. The, uh, the current policy right now would allow the officers to review that camera system prior to reports just for accuracy and consistency from, uh, you know, what they had on camera versus what they're seeing and what they're taking into account. I think the only exemption to that right now is with an internal affair situation. There is some language preventing the officer from viewing that, uh, the camera contents in the event of an internal investigation. And that's just to safeguard the investigatory approach in an internal affair situation. So, there are some situations that allow the officer not to go in.
I think when you presented this during a budgeting session or a study session, I can't remember which it was. You did say that once you had the, or I don't know if it was you, I think it might have been Rich, but, um, someone said that once you had your guidelines kind of worked out, that you would share us with those just as a point of information. So, I'd still appreciate that once you have them worked out.
Yep, not a problem.
Other discussion? Public input on this? All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, approved unanimously. Regular business item number two is the final reading to rezone 31 and a half acres of land to multi-family residential to allow purchase of said land by Bartles Lutheran Retirement Community. This has had extensive scrutiny. Let's go directly to a motion.
Move third and final reading of ordinance 1023 in ordinance amending section 100.3.02 of the Waverly City Code, providing for 31.49 acres located on the east side of 20th Street Northwest and 2,200 feet north of Knight Avenue from Agricultural A1 to Multi Family Residential District R3. Subject to signed zoning agreement, limiting construction up to four attached residences per structure.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
Did we get a copy of the purchase agreement?
I did not, I'm sorry. You asked me for that and I didn't answer. Sorry.
No, I, I- Yeah, I just, just to, yep. Um, yeah, sorta, I, I just thought of it too, that, um, one of the, and I, you know, I've, I think there's been, maybe just to kind of put a bow around this, there's been, I think, um, this is a process I think we can learn some things from. Uh, this is a wonderful project, um, but for the beginning, uh, a lot of neighbors, um, had some concerns because the developer came to planning and zoning without a plan. And so, neighbors were concerned that, hey, what's, what's going on in our neighborhood? And, and so, it prompted them to basically really kind of force their hand to get a petition so they could, um, force, force more discussion or, or basically stop it. Um, but the, the risk was, do we stop it or, you know, what, what's the worst case scenario? So, and then the developer pulled it from the meeting and then they came back, um, and the Bartles was involved and, and still another planning and zoning meeting after that, citizens were told they couldn't ask questions. Um, and it was, it was kind of an uncomfortable reading that they, they heard during the planning and zoning meeting where it was like a statement, and I've never heard that before. And, and people came to me wondering why it happened just at that meeting and why it didn't happen at others. So, there's, there's some, there's, uh, so I think from this going forward, I think we can learn from, um, you know, this is, this is, um, truly would be a wonderful project, I believe. Um, but it caused a lot of concern just how it was handled. So, um, just, uh, just some comments, I think, for the next time around for something like this. So, uh, and I don't know how that happened, um, you know, so I'll let that part go, but, um, so.
Thank you, David. Other comments, discussion? Public input? Roll call vote.
Cade.
No.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resincheck.
Yes.
And Waldstein.
Yes.
Third and final reading of ordinance 1023 passes five to one. Regular business item number three is the final reading of new language for the, for our R3 and R4 zoning districts to update both townhomes and vertical construction policies. Again, we're far down the road on this one. Let's go directly to a motion.
I'll move the third and final reading of ordinance 1024 and ordinance amending sections 100.8 and 100.9 of the Waverly City Code, providing for replacement of current R3 Multiple Family Residential District and R4 Multiple Family Transitional District language with a new R3 Town Home Residential District and R4 Apartment Residential District language.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor, just a sec. I, I want to make sure that the council was aware that there was one change that we did make on the site plan required under the grading plan 2C. We had put five foot minimum intervals and we had a lot of feedback from people who know about this kind of thing and said that we, that wasn't very effective for us to have. And so, um, the, the consensus was to recommend a two foot interval on the grading plan. And that's the only change we made from five foot to two foot to make it actually a realistic requirement. And I wanted to make sure that the council was aware that we did that.
Uh, before we vote then, discussion on-
What, so what is that?
It's a grading plan, um, you know, if you're talking about a grading plan that could be as small as a, a, a couple acres, a five foot grading plan doesn't give you much, doesn't give you much of a feel for what's, what's happening. Uh, the two foot is a much better way to doing things. And those are available for people to use to, to then, um, show how they're gonna change that or, or to do it with the development.
Integrating plans for rezervation?
As far as the site, yeah, the site plan.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and, and it's just part of the site plan requirement.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make sure it was an effective way of, of monitoring the drainage issues that might be averted if we, if we have a good plan, so.
No other discussion, public input? Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resincheck.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cade.
No.
The third and final reading of ordinance 1024 passes six to one, regular, five to one. Regular business item number four is a farm agreement with David Yocum for the Champions Ridge property that the city now owns. City Administrator, for the public, what's the agreement here now? We're not obviously gonna use it this summer, so.
Um, as Champions Ridge continues to fundraise through the end of the year, we would need to get this parcel into some kind of a farm lease to allow it to be farmed going forward. And that's what this accomplishes. As any improvements they would make would start next year, be it January in the spring. We need to get this under agreement contract so it can be farmed appropriately. And this is that lease with David Yocum to do that.
Okay, motion, please.
Move Resolution 1760, a resolution approving a farm lease agreement between the city of Waverly and David Yocum for 54 acres located at Champions Ridge Parcel Inn property for the total amount of $9,720 payable in two increments.
Second, please. Motion seconded, council discussion.
Now, there were a couple of questions on access with the dirt pile. That's all been worked out and, yes, we're working that out.
And so, just so the public knows, we're leasing at $180 per acre.
And just to clarify that is, when we bought this property from the Smith Estate, it was under contract already and we could not change that so that we had to assume the contract that was already in place.
And that's in perpetuity, or?
No, just for this year.
Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resincheck.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution 17 dash 60 unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is a proposed plan submitted to the DOT to maintain our city's non-turf properties. Uh, city administrator, again, for us all, but what are and what aren't we talking about here?
Well, as you recall, Tab rated a presentation at a prior meeting on the roadside vegetation management plan and how we wanted to move forward to identify the city property, non-turf, um, the open areas that we would maintain under this. And this is actually just approving that plan so we can move forward to apply for grants or anything that we would need to help fund parts of this. But without an actual approved plan, we cannot do that. So, um, I mean, if there's specific questions towards that, I certainly would have Tab direct those based on the presentation he gave, but this is just the approval of the plan he did present in that par point to the prior meeting.
Um, this is for the public watching and cognizant of all that. Um, so, we're not talking about the cemetery lands, we're not talking about parks, we're not talking about, uh, sports faci, we're talking strictly the other city-owned land as we move forward as a city. Is that correct, Tab?
Correct.
Okay, formal motion, please.
Move Resolution 1761, a resolution approving the submission of an integrated vegetation management plan by the city of Waverly to the Department of Transportation of the state of Iowa.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and seconded, council discussion? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resincheck.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resolution 17 dash 61 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number six is resolved to issue, issue debt to fund the Champions Ridge project. Um, I know this one has had a lot of water go over the dam, we're pretty well down the road. But for the public, uh, one more time so that they understand this vote, what are we doing and why the special bonding process, please?
Uh, this is actually a reimbursement resolution so that we can actually bond for the property that we have purchased. We've already spent the money. This would allow us to reimburse the city back from the funding we've spent. So, without this prior selling the bonds, we could not do that. So, this is a reimbursement resolution. It's what you normally hear it called, so.
Super. Motion, please.
Move Resolution 1762, a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150 dash 2 to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
Just so people know more too, I mean, basically-
Into the mic there, Wes.
We purchased it out of our excess funds that we have every year. We, when we do our audit, we have, what, 130 days of excess funds or whatever they always say.
Something like that.
Yeah, so, we use that excess funds to purchase this land and then now we're gonna reimburse ourselves. So, it's, we basically bought it with excess operating costs and then reimburse ourselves back like-
Right, we used our reserves, we don't like to dip into a lot, to buy it. And then we'll replace it, uh, once we sell the bonds and then the money comes back. So, sometimes people don't do that, they just dip in the reserves and leave it. We'd prefer to bring it back and actually keep them where they are. So, you're correct, it was taken with that and then we'll reimburse it.
Depending, I've noticed, I mean, it's, it's pretty regular practice on some cities, especially when things come up like that, you have to pay for it upfront so you go into your reserves and then reimburse yourself back, so.
Some cities have, this is a standing resolution every quarter, every, it just depends on how they're operating, but that is correct.
Yep, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wes. Other council discussion? Public input on this issue? Roll call vote, please.
Resincheck.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 17 dash 62 is unanimously approved. Regular business item now number seven is to approve preliminary work for constructing a new pedestrian bridge to replace the Green Bridge. This resolve originates from councilpersons Tim Kangas, I think, and Dan Lampy, correct? And, uh, Tim, do you wanna do any lead-in talk here on this?
No, it's just we've kind of talked, uh, with some citizens and, uh, as far as after the Green Bridge vote and where do we go forward trying to find a solution that fits within budget and within kind of what fits for that neighborhood? And so, it's kind of been settled on looking at a pedestrian bridge option and, and finding what, uh, what the actual costs or the projected cost would be from WK, HKS, have them do the finalize their plans on it.
So, this, uh, resolve is really to establish monies for an engineering workup? Okay, uh, before a motion, let's, let's, uh, open that up to discussion.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that this was already studied somewhat by WHKS during your original options. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is kind of a trip down memory lane. Uh, the staff summary that I put together kind of gives the timeline for these various, um, considerations that were given. Some date clear back to 2001 with, uh, the task force that was put together more recently. We have the study from BJ Engineering, Cedar Valley Engineering, and then finally WHKS. And, uh, I've provided, um, the summary, kind of the meat and potatoes portion of those studies. Uh, left a lot of the technical data out of it, but, um, uh, it's, it's summarized in here. And then, uh, what I've also provided is kind of the, uh, the decision matrix on, on roadway versus pedestrian, replace versus repair. I'll get there. So, um, I'm here, I'm, I'm available to, to talk about, um, any of the various options or, or the history of, of the- or the history of the considerations that were given by the task force or by the city council.
Because I understand this motion is basically to, I guess, authorize staff to ask WHKS to come back and do a proposal, so we're not really approving funds tonight, we're basically giving them the authority to ask WHK to come.
Yeah, it's not...
And then they would probably go through this, and they would propose, this is what it's going to cost for us to start looking into this and so forth.
Right, it's not, I think there was some incorrect wording or confusing wording where it talked about staff hiring WHKS. The staff doesn't hire WHKS. The staff engages WHKS to put together a scope of services based on the interest of the city council, that scope of services would then come back before the council for a formal approval.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've been down, a year ago, February of two thousand and sixteen, the discussion was, do we repair or replace? The decision was made to pursue repairing. We then, in July, June or July of two thousand and sixteen, reported back that the concrete piers were in bad shape and could not be salvaged, and that was going to adjust the price. So, that additional five hundred thousand dollars for pier replacement is not accounted for in this document here. This document dates back to February of two thousand and sixteen. So, anything that was originally thought where we could preserve and reuse the piers, they now need to be replaced, and the cost needs to be adjusted upwards by five hundred thousand dollars. In February of this year, we received bids that were in line with our cost estimate, and we did not advance it past the public hearing, and so the project was effectively killed to repair the existing structure for both vehicles and pedestrians. So, I think there was consideration or discussion by the couple of the council members, what if we were to look at a brand-new pedestrian bridge? What are the costs? What are the options related to that?
I think what our discussion centered around was looking at the feasibility and of a pre, or a prefabricated steel truss bridge.
Yes.
And I did a little bit of research with, I think his name was Brian from Minnetoka Construction, he gave me a little insight on different ideas. Those are available as a standard bridge. I know up to two hundred and, two hundred and fifty foot is a clear span, so I think we could probably get by with, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, we could get by with one pier in the middle rather than two piers, which I think would reduce cost. And then, really, what the scope of his, from a construction viewpoint, would just be prepare the abutments and build one pier, and then the engineering work is normally done by the fabricator. You just give them point-to-point distance, and they engineer a bridge.
Right, they're responsible for the structural design of the bridge. Our civil engineer would be responsible for everything else. You'd still have to have an engineered set of plans that address the bridge approaches, the abutments, the piers, those would fall under our civil engineer.
Which would be WHKS more than likely.
Right. I believe you had a price estimate from them on the construction side?
Not an official price, but, you know, one point four, I think he was very confident that he could fit that into.
Which we feel is very much in line with the cost estimate that VJ Engineering gave of one point seven million, which is all-encompassing, which includes the engineering design, includes the construction and the project administration. That fits in line as a total project cost of one point seven million.
And that would include the five hundred thousand dollars additional for the pier work?
Well, with a new, a new PED bridge, we were always going to be looking at replacing the piers and abutments, just like with a brand-new vehicle bridge, we would start over with brand-new piers and abutments.
But that, the one point four, the one point seven, that includes the five hundred thousand?
All that's, turnkey, piers, everything.
And there'd be no, you know, no borings, anything that would, or present borings that we would have would be valid for this, even if we did one pier?
Yes. The survey work and the geotech work that we've completed is reusable for whether it's a brand-new PED bridge or a brand-new vehicle bridge.
And you said that does also include any approach work that would need to be done?
The new PED bridge is, yes. Because you're going to be elevating, and I know the next question is going to be, well, how high do you elevate? Well, it's somewhat dependent on whether it's a conventional concrete beam bridge where your support structure is below the deck, or whether it's a truss bridge where your support structure is primarily above the deck with the trusses. But we're probably going to be in that four-to-six-foot range, depending on whether you go with a truss bridge or a conventional beam bridge.
Well, the difference between this and a vehicle bridge is the height probably isn't that much of a concern because it just has to be ADA accessible.
Right.
You know, it's not like we have, you know, an approach, you know, taking out houses, I would assume.
Well, it's much narrower, it can be done on, think of like half a street versus the full width of the street.
What's the cost for the, for WHKS to do this, if we ask them to do a scope of services agreement?
To actually design as if we're, to do a formal design and put together a bid package?
Whatever we're voting on today, what's that cost?
Well, I'm going to kind of step us through the process here. For repairing the existing truss bridge, we incurred costs of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, that included the geotech work for the boring of the stream bed, it also included the geotech work on the piers to core sample those as well, included a lot of the survey work. That's, we're not going to incur those costs again, okay? So, when we get right down to the design, putting together a bid package on a bridge of this nature, I'm going to somewhat defer to the president of WHKS, who's sitting in the back here. He heard the, the bridge was back on the agenda, and he's like, I think I'll come on down, it's only about an hour away, and sit in on it.
You can come forward.
But with Flo out here, I'm...
I thought he was a citizen back there, he's been up, so...
Risking his life in a major thunderstorm.
Well-resident. I, I'm going to say for a PED bridge, we're probably on the low end, fifty thousand on the upper end, maybe a hundred thousand to put together a bid package. Again, a lot of it depends on how fancy you want to get with it. Is this going to be kind of a generic PED bridge, or are we looking for a signature bridge for the community? I kind of think this is not the location for that. It's not readily visible from the sides, unlike the trail bridge up here, which is a hundred and thirteen years old now. And in two thousand and twenty-five, are we going to be needing to looking at replacing that bridge? We may be. That may be the location to invest into very much a signature pedestrian bridge because of its visibility from Bremer Avenue and being right in the heart of the community. Those are considerations that you as a council and the community need to be thinking about. How fancy, how much of a signature bridge do we want to have in that location? To give you some ideas of cost, they also put for a conventional concrete beam bridge, it's about one point one million. That seems to be very comparable to what Janesville expended on their pedestrian bridge at the Berwick Road Crossing, the former Berwick Road Bridge. About the same length, generic, concrete beam bridge, total cost between construction and engineering, I think, was one point one million.
You know, I guess what I see, you know, driving through Cedar Falls, you know, the mayor's bridge, and if you was familiar with that, the green, not that it's green, but you know...
Kind of is.
It would fit. You know, that, that style, I think, it's nothing really fancy, but, you know, it wouldn't even have to have the arches in there, just, you know, a basic. I guess that's what I, that was what I would envision.
I'm, I'm thinking that may have been about two point five million.
Oh, really?
Eric, do not quote me on that. But that's very much a signature bridge, and those costs go up proportionately.
I think this is an interesting conversation. I guess I have some concerns about the process. At the last meeting that we all had together, I didn't feel that there was consensus surrounding any particular next option prioritized, and I guess I went away from that meeting thinking that we would have some more conversation about that and also get more citizen input. I know as soon as this agenda became public, I immediately started getting phone calls about how did we arrive at this decision? Now, we're going to spend, you know, over a million dollars on tax, with taxpayers' money again, for a bridge that won't even serve the safety needs of the community. So, you know, I just, I guess I do, I understand the process, that we sort of have an informal rule that anybody, if any two of us can go to the mayor and ask that this put on, be put on the agenda, but I guess it begs the question, why aren't we pursuing some of the other options and getting more information on them, and then really have a full discussion of all of that before we spend another fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, in addition to the almost two hundred thousand that we've already spent? And, you know, I, so I have serious concerns about the process.
From an affordability standpoint, are we ever going to be in a position with what we have on the horizon for expenditures from the new water treatment center to, you know, our current projects that we have going on right now with Twentieth Avenue, Main Street, the Water Main, that kind of thing? You know, there seems to be a pretty well-laid-out...
But that, yeah, that's exactly my concern, Dan, is that in all of our discussions with what we're going to be spending and doing this year, nothing like this was included. So, I think there's a logical conclusion that if we move forward with this in this year's budget yet, that something else will have to go by the wayside, and we've not had any conversations about that. And so, again, I'm concerned about the process, and I kind of wish we would have had more discussion here, rather than simply two of you going and putting it on the agenda, which I understand you have every right to do, but I'm just expressing my concern about that process.
I think any council person has the right to do that, so.
That's what I just said.
Our informal was two.
Yeah, two, and that's what happened here.
No, she's not questioning the process, I mean, the right, it's just, does it take, what kind of discussion does it involve to know what to do next?
Well, we're doing that right now.
Right, right.
But our process has always been, it takes two, it takes two, you know, it's a good song.
Yeah.
I would prefer us to see, to talk about some other options as well.
I think we, personally, I think we have to be careful in talking about how we're being judicious with taxpayer money, because we threw away two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars last go-around, and those folks have been without a crossing for a long time, so we, I think we have to be careful, and I give these folks credit for pushing this along, because this is almost one of the few things that I've talked about since on council now.
Yeah.
And we need to be done with it and move on to something that actually pushes our community forward. I mean, we approved Body Camp tonight, and that was amazing. You know, that's going to push us forward. That was eleven thousand dollars. So, that's my concern, is I give, I give these guys credit, and they've done background work and so forth, and they're, and they're meeting the needs from, I found, the majority of the citizens. So...
And I think, you know, we've, we've pretty much determined, you know, given the vote that we had last time on this bridge, is that we're not going to repair it. You know, we're not going to repair it as a pedestrian bridge, and we're not going to repair it as a, as a vehicle bridge. So, how long are we going to continue to just leave it, you know, and be, it will become an ISO right now, there's still logs under it because we don't know what to do with it. I'm sure that's going to be taken care of sometime too, but it's still requiring maintenance, and it's not usable. It's been declared unsafe, and we still have people that walk across it from time to time.
I think the fence is higher now, but, yeah, I understand all that. I guess I just think, I think it's, I don't think it's completely accurate to represent, because I, some calls I got were from people in that neighborhood. So, it's not entirely accurate to say everybody is in favor, you know, of moving forward with a pedestrian bridge, and I...
I don't think we're ever going to get a consensus.
Yeah, I don't think we're ever going to get unanimity on anything in terms of that.
Right, that's right.
I think, you know, from my perspective, I think we have talked about it quite a bit, going through a number of different things, and including the, even the flow chart that Mike had up earlier, a little bit on that. I do kind of take a little exception to say that we threw away money, because we're, we would have had to do some of those things regardless, the borings, and collections on that, that's going to be reused for this anyway, so there's not, you know, the fact that we didn't follow through with the previous one because of cost concerns, doesn't mean that that money was just thrown away, and we're starting from scratch. We aren't starting from scratch, we've already got some detailed information that we can work with, and it will accelerate this process. And I think, as Dan said, this is kind of, you know, as you start eliminating, you know, we're not going to repair it for pedestrian, we're not going to repair it for a vehicle, what's our next step? Really, it's do-nothing, new pedestrian, new vehicle, and I think we've generally ruled out new vehicle based on previous discussions and wishes of a large number of the neighborhoods and the neighborhood.
And I think it's important to kind of, let's be honest, you know, in a city this size, do we really need two major crossings across the Cedar River within a mile of each other? You know, two, you know, one that's going to be an eleven million dollar project, the other one's a five million, would arguably be a five million dollar project. You know, the maintenance costs and everything on that, is it really necessary? So, and the biggest, the biggest problem, the group that I see that's affected the most by this are pedestrians that want to connect with the trail systems and Southeast School students. Whether or not there'll be a Southeast School there in ten years, I don't know, but we'll still have trails, and we'll still have, you know, we've got a great system of recreation for walking and trails, and that was a, that was a very important part.
Yep.
I guess, Tim, you may have ruled out vehicular, but I think I heard a much more mixed bag, both among the council as well as among citizens and people who spoke here, and there was also a gentleman who talked about doing nothing, I mean, so, who came and spoke to us. So, I'm just trying to listen to everybody, and there are people who think we, we do need two crossings. I heard that this last week, since the agenda has been out. So, I, you know, I think, you know, I think there are many more opinions out there than some of you are giving everyone credit for, whether it's your fellow council people or citizens. And I would have just preferred, and still would think we need more discussion and more information on all of the options that are left before moving forward with a particular one.
But my concern is, we had all those options. We had, we spent a lot, we spent, we had three different consultants come and give us all those options. What else would we want?
Over two years of discussing.
And then we, we went through the process, and we voted to the point where we, we took an engineer's time away from other projects that probably could have been a better priority for them, and designed a bridge to the point where it went to bids, and we've been continually counseled by our staff to not take a project to bid and then cancel it because it would hurt our reputation, and we did that, and so now we're saying we need more information? I don't know.
Well, I would like to know what, I would like to know what a scope of services, just a simple question, let alone more detailed ones, what a scope of services agreement would cost us if this is for fifty to a hundred thousand, would it be comparable for, to have to do that for a vehicular crossing as well?
But I, but I understand, is that's what they're going to come back and propose, correct?
I don't think so. I understand just a pedestrian.
They're going to do this, what's in front of them, but if you would like to do that, Edie, you had all the chance to do that, and you could have worked with anyone to get that accomplished.
I'm just expressing my view now.
This is what is in front of us now, this is what council has, you know, these are the rules that we have, this is what's in front of us, we're not committing to any millions of dollars because we're just signing an agreement here to get preliminary plans. We're not even getting plans that are going to go out to bid that'll cost hundreds of thousands like we did before, that we didn't use, so it's just basic planning to sign WHKS to do some initial work.
I think this is the equivalent of a bid package.
Last time we had this vote, we voted seven to zero to do that last time, to repair it, and then we turned it down later. So, when you say not everyone agreed, everyone did agree at one point, seven to zero, and then it kind of fractured off from there. But this is a process that council's always worked under since I've been on here for five years. But this is a process that council's always worked under since I've been on here for five years and if you wanted something different, you could.
That's fine. I'm expressing my, my concern about that.
You can vote.
Let me also weigh in a little bit. I think that, as I've watched over the process, I, I think that when we voted, made our last vote on not repairing, the options before the public were narrowed. They were narrowed to, to a new pedestrian, or a new vehicle, bridge or a repair. We weren't talking pedestrian. All the newspaper, everything that I've received, all of it, just let me finish. All of, all that I was involved in was between those two options. When you take the repair option out, what was left was a two-lane bridge protecting a crossing and finding money in a future budget. This wasn't voted upon, but this was the direction that I was hearing. I think we have a huge portion of the town that expects and hopes for a two-lane bridge where we will have a crucial crossing in a growing town that will be practical and usable.
I have a real issue with the crucial verbiage in your statement.
I'll withdraw it. I don't want to defend crucial. That's a subjective and for a lot of people.
We've been, we've been over two and a half years without a crossing there and everybody's just been just fine.
And I would say the options were even narrowed down to a repair, the Green Bridge, or a two-lane bridge. I was never, to, to me, my official statement is a two-lane bridge there is just crazy for considering that we're building 10th Avenue and we're doing a lot of tricky things, you know, quite frankly, right now from a budgeting standpoint, we're having to raise our, we've had to raise our budget significantly just to do the planning for that project. So it's, I, I don't see it as, it was an option between one or the other. We basically voted to repair it or not, and we voted to repair it and went down that path. So that's, that's, that's what I was involved in, so.
Mayor, when we get done discussing the ins and outs of why this proposal got here, could we get back to maybe some questions on the proposal itself?
Yeah, I think we all said enough on this one. This is, isn't it any more clear now than it ever was? Go ahead, Dan.
Again, based on the feedback that I've gotten from the community, again, the overwhelming is if we're going to do something there, they want it to at least support emergency vehicles during severe weather, those type of things. So if you're looking at a pedestrian as its primary focus, will that support dump trucks, fire trucks under emergency situations?
No.
Can we give them direction to include that?
It hasn't today.
It never did.
I think our challenge all along is.
Mayor, I think I waited plenty of time for other people to say their piece. I'd like to ask my question.
Don't, don't interrupt and let Dan speak, and that's a good point. And you, and your answer was that it did not. Go ahead, Dan.
The fact that it haven't been true for 50 years is great. We've had comments here that we should be thinking of the future. We should be thinking about where we're headed. That's where my questions are. For me to support any crossing there, it needs to have the ability to have emergency vehicles go across it at least in severe weather, natural disasters. If we're going to put a pedestrian, primary focus pedestrian bridge, if it does not support emergency vehicles, I cannot vote for it based on my position as well as the overwhelming position the community has passed on to me.
So the standard design for pedestrian bridges is a five-ton load limit. They can be designed for 40 tons if, if that's what you so choose. And, oh, that's nodding. So you provide the design parameters and they will ensure that the bridge is capable of supporting those loads. Something that's coming up is we're going to be looking at revisiting the Southeast Waverly flood protection. And one of the things that's key to that is looking at raising 7th Avenue Southeast to the point where it would be accessible, maybe not during a 100-year flood event, but for the flood event that we had last September. It would be accessible and we'd be able to maintain access into that neighborhood.
That's great. Again, for me to support it, it needs to support emergency vehicles.
So can I ask a question? Where the fire station was built, because it was, there was a lot of discussion when the, before the fire station was built of where to put it. If there's a fire at Dan Lampy's house, what route would you take to get there? What route? What's the fastest, best route to get to?
Under what conditions?
If there's a fire.
Under what conditions?
Today.
You're, you're talking during.
For the last, for the last 50 years, if there's a fire in Brookwood Park area, which, how would the fire trucks go to get there?
We'd go south and come in on 7th or 8th Avenue.
Now if there's a fire on the north side, closer to Little League Diamonds, which way would the fire trucks go to get there today in the last 50 years?
Your point, just make the point. Your point is, go ahead, go ahead.
Point is, I don't know why a fire truck would ever need to go over that bridge because it's here and you go around to get to each point. It's actually, it's actually slower. It's actually slower to go around the long way to get the bridge.
We have ambulances also, you have police department vehicles.
My position was during severe events, so.
And by raising, by raising 7th Avenue, that will, and we've talked about that a lot, so that would.
I guess I've never, I guess I've never understood that. I guess in all respect, I've never understood why we talk about emergency vehicles. And I'm, I'm not the expert, obviously, but the fire station is on Main thoroughfare. So if you have a fire, you go down, as opposed to going down through Main Street and coming around on 3rd. In a flood event, the approaches to the bridge is, I remember, we're actually underwater.
Yes.
So you couldn't get over the bridge anyway.
Correct.
So I, so I've always been confused of the conversation about emergency vehicles because it's an illogical route.
A new bridge is not going to be raised the four to seven feet that we've talked about, which would bring the approaches out of the way.
It wasn't.
Approaches would never, the roads would still be underwater going to the bridge.
We voted to repair the bridge and not raise it, and then we voted seven to nothing.
Yes.
Everybody agreed to that.
Again, I stayed in my position and.
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah.
How much would it cost if you made the five-ton, if you increased the five-ton load limit to be able to support emergency vehicles, how much would that add to the, to the 1.6 million or the 1.4 million?
Which emergency vehicles, so.
Well, it, it would affect the, the design of the beams and the, the substructure. So going from five-ton to 40-ton while maintaining a 14-foot width is, are you increasing it 10%? 20% in cost? 25 to 30%.
Okay, thanks.
I just, I think we're getting away from what is in front of us. So what is in front of us is to just vote to hire WHKS to do a small amount of planning for a small amount of money to see if we want to go forward with having them do all the way to go to bid.
Okay, so what I want to make, make clear is when, when we were discussing the costs and I kind of throwing out there a range from 50,000 to 100,000, that's, that's, once we've selected a, a bridge design to take it all the way to a bid letting. What we're struggling with and why there's such a wide range is we're struggling with what bridge do we build? Do we build a generic pedestrian bridge? Do we build a signature bridge? And Dan, I did look it up. The mayor's bridge is 2.9 million.
Well, if that's the case, then, I'm using as an example, I mean.
And we have everything in between.
But again, I'm just saying, tonight, we're, we're not going to spend a million dollars in this year's budget. Nothing's going to be built this year. That'll all be in next year's budget. Only thing out of this year's budget is going to be possibly 50 to 100,000, depending on what we decide and further meetings. Tonight is just so that they can do some planning and come back with some options and we'll pay them whatever they charge us.
Well, I, I think a path for it would be for us to, to look at different types of bridges and we can do that internally. We can do that with the council. We can do it with a, a citizen group of people.
I agree.
And then we, we, we select bridge concepts that we like. Then we would go and engage them to start cost estimating the different variations. And I would look at, I think we ought to try to narrow it to two or three choices. And then they can start developing some more detailed cost estimating. And, and only then if you decide to advance it, do you amend the agreement to, to expand it into a, a letting, a formal design letting.
I've seen a better answer than I wanted. So tonight's vote literally costs zero. Tonight's vote costs $0.
Just kind of rose from the beginning.
Tonight's vote costs $0. All it's going to do is say, yes, we want to start working toward a pedestrian bridge in this place. Yes, we will have further discussions on what type of that bridge will be. And if we vote again to hire WHKS to do those plans, we will.
What we're doing, what we're doing tonight is just, it's an RFP, request for proposal, right?
But for a very specific bridge and, I mean, and I think.
Not for a very specific bridge.
A very specific type, type of bridge. And I mean, I'll, I voted, when, when we started this all with the repair, I stopped voting yes as soon as I saw there was going to be more money. And it ended up being about $200,000, which I said, guessed at the very beginning after talking with a couple of engineers. And that's why I voted no, so we wouldn't spend those $200,000 and then end up not doing something. And I'm, I'm going to vote no probably again tonight for the very same reason.
But what you want to do is spend $5 million to build a new bridge there.
I've never said that.
Okay, well then I guess I don't know why you're worried about the whole process because you keep acting like you want to bring something forward.
Because we have not been, we have not done this in a, in a planned way where it's shooting from.
This is the initial step, and then from here we'll take more steps and narrow it down to what type of bridge and we'll have votes.
Well, I, I.
I think it's time to vote and discuss this.
I would rather have more, more discussion on the council about what our priorities are and what the plan is for getting more information on each of those options and going them in a prioritized way.
What this leads to, and it costs $0.
You're assuming that this is a priority. I'm not assuming that.
But we've, but we've, I guess I understand we did that. I mean, we showed, we started.
I know it's a lively discussion and.
Flow chart. I guess I don't, I guess.
Yeah, we went through the whole flow chart and Mike showed it again tonight and this bridge was on there, so.
It was on there, but it wasn't clearly the next option.
No, and, and I would.
In your opinion.
But in my opinion, but my, my opinion, because I've listened to a lot of people.
And Edie, nobody has ever wanted a pedestrian bridge.
This is, this is almost new to the public that you're going to switch all of a sudden from either repair or replace to a pedestrian bridge. This is, it's been on the table, but it isn't, I, I just don't feel that the public is, is supportive.
As Mike said, they'll have plenty of times to chime in because this vote costs $0 and then when we start deciding what type of course to do.
That's true. I mean, the public might be for it after we get through it. I'm, I'm just saying at this point.
But it's been discussed many times. How many times?
No, no feedback to me has come for pedestrian bridge.
We had come up to, people have come up to that mic and state they wanted a pedestrian bridge there instead of fixing, us fixing the bridge. So people did say that to you because they said it right at that microphone. Bergen was one of them.
A few, a few.
The concern, the concern though is for the repair, for the repair option. We had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and pages and pages of petitions.
And we had overwhelming support for replace too.
Well, but.
That's why the vote went partially the way it went.
I had maybe 10 emails, but we had, we had hundreds.
I had, I had overwhelming.
Yeah, so.
So this is where we're at, folks.
I think we're rehashing a lot of history and we're not getting anywhere. If we could call the vote, sir, please.
Thank you, sir.
But it's a necessary discussion in order to put onto the table, I think, the realities that we're in. Let's go with, do you want to, we haven't put a motion for it.
I motioned to call the vote.
Oh, we haven't, we haven't moved the resolution.
There's no resolution.
We haven't had public, any public comment on this too. I think we have.
We will need public comment.
I move resolution 1763, resolution authorizing city staff to hire WHKS Inc. to develop professional services agreement for a new pedestrian bridge at the cross of Cedar River at 3rd Street Southeast.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
The motion is seconded. Before we go to the public comments, any last counsel? Public comment?
I wish Waverly would just have a sense of history.
You're welcome to come up though.
Mary Sheldroth, 3rd Street Southeast, Waverly. As residents for repair, we understand the repair of the historic Green Bridge did not fit proportionally into the overall city budget due to the cost. Although that was our first choice, we have accepted this decision by the council. But we now do trust the important pedestrian-only project will indeed fit into the city budget at a significantly lower cost than the repair and also turn out to be the very best overall decision after all. This pedestrian-only bridge will definitely preserve and protect the old Fourth Ward Southeast District. It will also enhance the overall cultural integrity of Southeast Waverly and enhance our healthy lifestyle emphasis by connecting and encouraging the use of our excellent trails and walkways. Personally, I think we'll be surprised once it is functioning, how much it will be used and liked and how much it will enhance the quality of life for a multitude of residents. We trust the time is finally right to connect the Southeast Waverly neighborhoods once again. And a new pedestrian-only bridge is the right choice at this particular location. Particularly now since the Cedar River Parkway Bridge project completion has been accelerated for industrial and heavy traffic use. All along, we have heard that it was too expensive to repair and now we're looking at this pedestrian-only option as something that is within reason. We've waited a long time. We're very happy for Champions Ridge, for Eisenhower Village and the, you know, development there, lots of other things going on. But honestly, we're feeling quite neglected in Southeast. And also the importance of the historical value of our neighborhood and the quality of life for not only that particular street, but enhancing the whole Southeast Old Original District is extremely valuable. And I hope you'll consider that. In addition, we do understand the cost is relatively low for this pedestrian-only option. And improvements for future possible flooding will be an additional asset. We're understanding that they're going to raise it, so this was not going to happen with the repair. So this will definitely be an improvement for Southeast and also at a lower cost. We know you are careful, prudent spenders of taxpayers' dollars, but we do believe it is finally time to do this for Southeast Waverly. We believe the discussion has been made over and over again and honestly, I think we all understand and realize that we will never come to a consensus with this. So we know that sooner or later the council needs to make the decision. And we believe the time is now and that you would be sympathetic. We have waited this long and we have the cost down and it will maintain the historical integrity of Southeast. Dan is on the Historical Preservation Commission and he has been in contact, attends the meetings. And they said we wanted it repaired, but understanding it's not going to be. We do, and the importance of the integrity of Southeast is our next emphasis. So please, you know, add that to what you're considering tonight. It's not just what you're hearing from all over town. It's time to make a decision of what's best for Southeast, please, for our community, our cultural heritage, and also certainly for all residents. Thank you.
All right. Everyone's voice is important. Other voices, I'd like to speak.
John Meyer, Waverly. There is another increment that maybe you want to think about. Maybe I'm just complicating your life. But, you know, Dan has talked about emergency vehicles and all of a sudden we're jumping to fire engines and all of that kind of thing. But there are times when there's a couple of feet of water on 7th Avenue and ambulances are stuck, you know, they can't get through there. There are residents that are in there at times looking, I, I think it might be worthwhile looking at an increment where you can get, you know, enough width to get an ambulance. There you can get vehicles in and out so that people can move their stuff out of their houses when 7th Avenue isn't underwater, is underwater, but they can negotiate it with their pickup, their car and whatever to get in and out. Looking at something like maybe. Looking at something like maybe a ten-ton load limit, that has been done on pedestrian bridges, I know it has been done. It's been done to allow maintenance crews to get across four-lane highways and things like that that are designated as trails. It's been done that way so you can get a tractor and a mower and those kinds of things. Maybe you want to think about something like that to serve those emergency needs that aren't the extreme, but they do happen.
Thank you, John, other input?
I think that's a good point, though, what Mike brought up, I mean, Seventh Avenue is right on the top of the list of things that we've talked about for many years to redo for flood, and all we have to do is raise that, raise that up as we want to, and then that will stay out of having water on it.
And if it's over top of Seventh Avenue, the bridge is probably gonna be unusable.
Right.
Well, not necessarily, I guess, there's a window in there, like it was in September.
But as long as, as soon as we raise Seventh Avenue, that'll solve a lot of problems for that neighborhood, so.
Raising Seventh Avenue, too, gives you more time to get everything out.
Yeah, exactly.
Why can't, why could, I mean, we'll vote now, obviously, but I guess I, I would be interested in getting more, more information, I mean, on what the same kind of activity would involve, the same kind of report for a ten-ton load limit like John Meyer just, I mean, that would allow those emergency vehicles to go through, and I do want to say I'm still listening to those constituents who are not few in number, who are still wanting two-lane vehicular, so I'd, I'd like to get some more information on that as well, as we progress through this process.
I think the law's gonna give us a shopping list of bridges here, is that-
Well, that's not what we're voting on, we're saying pedestrian here in our motion, and I don't want to limit-
You just said a ten-ton pedestrian bridge, you want to, you're into-
I just don't want to limit it to only pedestrian, which is what, what our motion says.
Well.
Ten-ton pedestrian bridge is a pedestrian bridge.
Right.
Okay.
Again, if people want a two-lane bridge, you could have brought that forward at any time. So if those are the overwhelming people you want to make happy, more than welcome.
I'm not talking about making them happy, I'm trying to, I'm talking about making a good decision, Wes, and there was no, there was no indication that there was, this was gonna be on the agenda, so, and that's fine that it is, but I didn't bring it forward because I thought we, as a council, were going to take another look at this in a different way before having an agenda.
We, as a council, made a good decision to repair it at one point, too, but that obviously didn't pan out.
There's also some other thing on the agenda that I had no idea that was on there until today, so.
We approved getting the plans and specs and the bids in to replace it.
No, we-
Well, this, this gets back to the divisions again, so-
There were people that sent me emails and that signed petitions saying they were against doing anything other repair, got ahold of me and said, now that I see the true cost, I can't support the repair, so. This whole conversation, to me, highlights the fact we don't really have a plan, because we can't articulate what we're going to tell a firm, design firm, to go out and do for us, so.
Well, it's been four years, so what do you want to do?
So what we had that-
How many more, how many more meetings do you want to have on this bridge over the next, after four years before you have a plan?
I'm not confident we can make the decision, because we've done it already.
Yeah, we already made it, seven-zero.
We've already done it, we've been through, we had all the options as clear as could be in a flow chart and pictures, and, you know, different financial analysis and all, you know. So I'm, I'm struggling with that, and that's what the overwhelming feedback I'm getting from people now is, seriously, we're still gonna talk about the Green Bridge.
So everybody, everybody in this, everybody on council was aware of the options.
Yeah.
So, we've already discussed and rediscovered and gone through and found pros and cons and everything else. That one didn't work, it's time to vote on this one.
Let's go.
Perfect thing, call the vote.
Just one last question, city administrator-
Can I get a ruling on that, because once you officially call the, call for a vote, I mean, you kind of have to, that's, that's the rules, right?
No, I, I will, call the vote when, after I ask the city administrator on the, if we, if we approve this, in terms of this budget, is there room to do, do we have room?
Roberts Rules of Order, don't we run by those?
WHKS, one?
I, I don't know, I don't know the numbers, I don't know, I don't know. I just want the vote to be called.
James has called the vote, I've called the vote.
This is forty minutes of, of rehashing this again and again and again, and if it goes through, we'll figure it out. That's the best I can tell you, sir, I can't give a definitive answer on the numbers of projects, we have estimates, but I've not ran numbers on a million, one million, seven, two million, we don't know what it's gonna cost. I wish I had better information for you, but-
No, 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 not, not that part, well, that one is real going to be complex, but just the immediate cost here.
We did this for two years before you got here, still.
This was, just a minute, Wes, one at a time.
We've already called the vote.
I'm running the meeting, go ahead.
I need to hear your question, sir, I didn't catch it initially, it was-
What the, what this will cost us with, tonight, if we vote yes, that'll be absorbed in this budget.
Nothing that I'm aware of until they bring back an agreement to actually go forward, and they're going to prepare some sort of an agreement estimate at a much later date, once you determine what you'd like to have engineered, et cetera, so this will not cost us anything tonight. It's setting the stage for future votes, where we can talk about this again and again.
Right.
Correct, right?
Future votes.
That's why you're lucky you weren't here.
Would you like to call the vote?
I already did five times, and so did James before me.
Then we'll have a roll call vote, thank you, Wes, for your good humor.
I'm, I guess there's no rules to meetings.
Don't let comment, just roll call vote, please.
Oh, now I can't comment, now I can't comment all of a sudden.
Go ahead.
Well, let me think here, let's see.
No, 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 comment, roll call vote, please.
I am, I said gade.
Do I get to think about it?
Oh.
We're voting?
I called your name.
Okay, may I approve that?
Yes.
Yes, I approve.
Angus.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
No.
Resnichak.
Yes.
Wollstein.
No.
It passed, uh-
Order two.
Order two. Regular business item number eight is our city summer vac-
Remove that, remove that.
Skip to ten.
Remove eight, remove nine, yeah.
I'm sorry, my numbering is-
Skip to the one that wasn't on the agenda until today either, that we didn't know anything about, so.
No, it was on.
Well, we didn't know anything what it was about until today.
Move this off, I moved this off when we put it the agenda, so eight.
Not against the law.
But, for the public, this is, okay, this is now ten, for, yeah. Yeah, so I, back on, back on track here. Uh, regular business item number eight is affirmation of public works summer leave request policy. This is our summer vacation policy, and also a union matter, uh, city administrator, you want to lead, lead in?
Uh, yes, sir, as the union requested this meeting, I would ask that they come and explain their position first, sir, if that would be okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rich Curtinbach with IBW, International Brotherhood of Largely Worked Workers. We represent the workers with both the city unit and also with the police department here at the city of Waverly. A few minutes ago, I was gonna say I was gonna bring the sunshine in for you, but another cloud came over. Like a lot of marriages, you have those disagreements once in a while, and we have one that we're dealing with here with our labor management issue with the city. We have a long history of working out issues without arbitration. In fact, in the twenty-one years that I've been representing the folks with these two units, this is only the third time I've been before city council in our grievance procedure, uh, and this is part of our procedure that we've had in this contract since the, the beginning of it. The makeup of the wastewater, uh, department, a group is with three employees working modified weeks, one Sunday through Thursday, the grievant, and one working Monday through Friday, and the third person works Tuesday through Saturday. This is a rotating shift-type work environment. One of the concerns I have with this grievance is, I don't believe it's actually addressing the main problem, but, uh, to deal with that, we're, we're going through this process, and hopefully, we can get there. There is a day that's been requested off, and it's May twenty-eighth, soon coming, uh, that day was denied on April eighteenth and discovered on April nineteenth. Grievance was filed on April twenty-fifth after attempts to resolve the issue with a visit between, uh, city minister James Baroner, myself, uh, and myself also meeting with the grievant. It took a couple of days for us to meet, which, actually, when the final thing came in on our seventh day, when we have time limits for grievances, so the union, uh, again, takes the responsibility for filing the grievance at any time to process and trying to get a resolve. We have done well in the past twenty-one years trying to mediate resolves instead of having to go to an arbitrator and get something done that way. In regards to our contract language in question, the union does not believe that the employer cannot develop new rules or procedures, that's not what this grievance is about. The employer does waive some of these broad management rights by agreeing, and this isn't a contract, such rules and regulations are not to, are not inconsistent with provisions of this labor agreement. This is spelled out in section two of our current agreement. The conflicting contract language is in section eighteen where the, where the grievance lies, and it were, under G, approval of use of floating holiday time must be received from the department director in advance. The city shall not unreasonably withhold approval to use floating holiday time, but where, but hereby reserves the right to disapprove requests if, in the opinion of the department director at the time, loss would be, the time loss would adversely affect departmental operations. The basis of the grievance is employee requested a single day off and was denied due to new seasonal policy. Part of the reasons here is that we take forth and with some of our discussion and trying to resolve this is, uh, right now, we feel that the grievance, uh, is about unreasonably being denied, the day off being unreasonably denied. The day requested is a Sunday, not a Monday through Friday, a Sunday. Again, these three people that work in this department are responsible for making sure what you flush down your toilet goes away from your homes, so they rotate. But this is also means that these people have lives. Mr. Cochran's leave request is not a hindrance to a schedule, scheduling work or creating a substantial hardship on the operation of the city. Terry is only one of the three that has any request for vacation leave throughout the summer. The other two individuals don't even have anything on the books at this point. The issue centers around the new policy and its concerns, the issue, again, was so concerning that we called for a labor management meeting, uh, and held that on April twelfth and met with the city administrator, because this is such a widespread issue, not just with the, the folks working in wastewater, but with all departments and public works. In our discussion, it was brought up several times that the single-day and partial-day restrictions in the new policy was of grave concern among a broad swath of all our public works employees. This was not necessarily specific to separate departments, but again, we see it's not equitably being applied due to separate issues with streets and solid waste. Uh, again, something with streets and solid waste, we had a previous issue with this, and it was addressed. We negotiated with the department at that point a calendar, and this was back in February two thousand and seven, as a departmental way of making sure when the department needed workers for specific jobs or specific manpower needs, there was a, a schedule that was developed, or depending on if it was a recycling week or not, how many people could be off in solid waste, how many people could be off in streets department. So we've negotiated that, and this, this new policy, uh, kind of falls in conflict with that as well. But again, that was an issue that we were brought in to resolve the issue, and we worked with the borrowing unit in educating them and how, and how, what the need was and how to work with it. We feel that this new policy is unequitably applied due to several staffing issues or supervision issues, uh, and again, having negotiated that separate leave schedule in the past, uh, is not necessarily being applied over all the department, public works departments. This is also not a city-wide policy, uh, this is only affecting the public works folks. Past time off history is documented as a past practice. Back in December two thousand and fifteen, we did have a grievance which was resolved, uh, again, had to do with time off request. Uh, these three employees in wastewater maintained an overtime list which shows the dates in which employee was off, who filled that leave, uh, again, with the special needs with wastewater, they work very well in making sure that they cover what's needed for the, the operation there. This grievance has been, uh, the, the grievance has properly accrued vacation time to be used as listed in our collective bargaining agreement. Uh, Mr. Cochran is not asking for more than he has earned. The current agreement allows employees to earn three floating holidays per year as a casual day. Uh, this is what this, uh, request was for. The city of Waverly has a great bunch of employees, I've enjoyed having the ability to represent them and work for them. We have witnessed it several times, uh, again, with great trial with the floods, uh, they know how to do their jobs, they know how to do them well. Even though this grievance is about just one employee, I can tell you it has a huge impact on all employees. Are they going to be denied next? And a lot of their concerns has to do with their time off in summer, when they have kids off or have a special events during the summer, and it's, this is part of being restricted, um, especially spending time with their families. We have gone decades with working out a resolve when the concern has come up, but apparently, this time, it looks like we have a, a situation where we may end up having to have someone outside give us a, a final definition. I see by the agenda, there's already a motion in place as far as denying this grievance, but I do thank you for your time and, uh, your time as far as, uh, consideration and, uh, this grievance moving forward.
Thank you.
Do we have to ask questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask, um, obviously, this is a new policy, when was the union and employees notified of this policy that they could only take five days off over two-month period?
Well, it's not necessarily, yeah, I guess it is, it's, uh, the time period, the, the policy, and, and I might want to just refer to James, uh, as far as your process.
From the time between April through October, you'd be limited to five days in any consecutive eight weeks, so you get five days off over two months is all between April and October, I just want to know when you were notified of that taking place.
Well, the policy was dated January thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen. I did receive a call from James about the policy was coming out and employees the next day. The problem is, is there was no education with the, the workers prior to that, and it did catch them off guard. When we worked with the issue prior in two thousand and seven, that was probably a month and a half process to coming up with the design and concern, and then we met with employees and helping educate how that was gonna be applied. We didn't have that opportunity this time.
I've just talked to other city employees, I have no idea, I don't know this man, so, but I know other city employees have talked to me, and, uh, they just said, you know, it, obviously, you plan for summer vacations, and usually, it was a week, so, and then if something comes up where you need one extra day, people have had to miss, you know, Little League games, they had to miss, you know, family, other things, and, uh, these are the same people that get called out on Christmas to pile snow in the middle of the night, and I'm sure it's the same kind of thing with water and sewer, but if they would have known, if this would have taken place effective January eighteen, it's something people could have planned for, uh, maybe planned their vacations a little better around that without it having to be, you know, some people already had plane tickets bought, I already have, you know, I'm, I'm going to Vegas and I'm going to Colorado, so I'd break this rule every single, every single year, I'd break this rule if I can only take five days off over two-month periods, so, uh, but if I would know about that ahead of time, you could plan those things out as well.
I, I will tell you that I believe that there is some leniency given, and more in one area than there is able to be given in another. Uh, again, I think the communication process needs to be widened and worked out. Where we were part of the education process in two thousand and seven, we weren't part of this one. So, um, I think that's one of the breakdowns we're having right now.
And then one last question, you said the day that this person wants off is a Sunday?
Yes.
It's a Sunday of a normal three-day work weekend for most people because of the holiday.
So what's the standard practice, I mean, is, is Sunday a scheduled day, or is it a considered over?
It is for this employee, it's a scheduled workday, then he's off Monday for the holiday.
Are they given opportunity to cover other shifts if they want?
If someone else is wanting to take a day off, they work it out between the three of them. of them. Which one's going to cover for that guy to have that day off? That was already taken care of by the request.
So, they, within their own workforce, they had it covered?
Yes, they did.
Yes, I'm confused then.
We are too. This comes back to the policy being applied. He has two vacations, two five-day vacations scheduled, and this would be an additional day on top, and that conflicts with the policy. That's why it's being denied. Not because it's a hardship on manning the job or maintaining the city services. It's strictly because of this policy for him wanting to take a Sunday off of the holiday weekend.
So, he did go through the process and got someone to cover his shift for him, so there'll still be the same number of people working that Sunday?
Correct. And there's another individual that's going to be working on Monday on the holiday.
So, I guess I'm a little... Unfortunately, I just got this today, and I'm trying to read the policy and then taking the notes of the date. So, the vacation was planned for May 28?
Yes, that's the day requested.
And so, when did they request this vacation time?
The request went in on...
That April 18th, was that the date?
It was April 12th is when he made the request.
Oh, okay. Just as I'm... And maybe someone can answer. So, just the pages I'm reading now, there's, "Request for vacation shall be submitted in writing later than two months prior to the intended vacation." Does that cause a problem?
No, the city, we've worked with that in the process, each of the departments working with that. We've got a past practice. If it's available, just like we worked out the process in 2007, if it's within that two-month period, it really depends on what's going on. If the director or the department head at that point supervisor can allow them the less than two months. This was a casual day, which is a little bit different as far as taking a vacation day.
So, it was never approved? It was just, it was denied, I guess?
Yes. I don't know who the signature is, the superintendent, but then the director, Mike Sherry, denied it on the 18th, April 18th.
Then to read to the policy that I, or the email that I got this afternoon, it says, the very last line says, "Changes from this practice may be permitted with prior written approval from the director." So, basically, that is saying anything that's above, they can waive it and approve whatever they need.
Yeah, it could be waived.
Okay.
So, it was requested, requested on the 12th and denied six days later, or almost a week later. I guess, was there a reason for that, or what's the process? Does it take...
I think you need to ask that to James.
I'm just trying to fill in all the details, I guess.
Well, and if I could, there was a reason we started with this process in the first place. You know, going back, a lot of the issue that we see in the past years, you've had a lot of information given out that we've had employees that would take a lot of time off during the summer, which, as we know, is the busiest time of year for the city. From April, October is when the core services, most of them to be done by the city or to occur. Now, in the winter, you don't have a lot of services to be done. It's mostly snow plowing, tree trimming. There's not that much that's happening. So, when you have four to five weeks of vacation, which is what a lot of the employees out there have, and you have multiple people gone, we do not have an abundance of staff to cover those shifts all the time. Some departments can, some departments can't. We were needing to make sure that we had staff available to get something done during the summer. And if you look at the history of the time that's been taken, the majority of vacation time in this department is taken between May to September, October, which is again, the busiest time of year. And so, the goal was to develop a policy that did not prevent them from taking their vacation. They can still take four weeks off from April to October, even with this schedule. Every other month, you take a week off. It's four weeks you can take off. So, we're not denying that. And anytime after October, there is no limit to what you can and can't take off for those six months. You know, the goal of that policy was to try and stretch out vacations so we had coverage throughout all departments. So, it was not specific to a single department. Yes, there are examples that you can make all day long of this is covered, this is not covered. We were not going to single out individuals or departments, but tried to do a blanket policy. Mike himself and the other staff in his office are also following this policy from the top down. It is not just these union individuals. It is everyone in that department is following this policy.
So, this is not just these three people that are...
No.
It is for the entire public works division.
Correct. From Mike down.
From Mike down, sure.
It is not focusing on these three individuals or picking them out.
The language, it's my experience, that if this policy is coincidental with the union language, that we should stay with it. If this needs to go to arbitration, I guess I'd welcome that and let them decide if that's what's going to happen. But I think for us to, you know, take away your ability to manage through this as managers of the city, I think that that would be, that'd be a dangerous precedent to set.
I mean, that was our initial goal, was to try and get a policy in place that would thread out the time off throughout the entire summer. Again, instead of having one week off every month, which has been happening in the past, you have some individuals take a week off every single month, you know, June, July, August, November, when you're short. And again, we've seen, we do not have a lot of staff in various departments. Nobody can deny that we are overloaded in staff in these areas.
This discussion is not about one person having a day off.
No, absolutely not.
It's about a departmental-wide policy that you need to be able to enforce. Otherwise, it means nothing.
Right. If you disagree with the policy, then the grievance can come through and he can take his day off. If you agree with the policy, we were only trying to enforce the policy we put out in January. It was sent to the union before we sent it out. It could have been grieved in February, March, April. It was the same there it is now. For whatever reason, we waited until somebody was denied, then we grieved it.
Is that...
That makes sense. But I just have a question. You said that the policy allows you to take five days off every other month, that it really doesn't. You have to take five days off and then wait eight weeks, really two months in between. That's what it says right here. Five, you're limited to five days in any consecutive eight weeks.
It's a sliding eight weeks. So, you move eight weeks at a time. You can take day, 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 five days, three weeks, take five more days, one in a row, three weeks.
Most people would go on a family vacation, summer. That's when everyone takes vacations. I've worked at lots of places. There's people gone. That's why, I don't know, that's the way it is, but nobody...
Right. And you could take a week.
But if you took a week, then you'd have to wait two whole months for you to take another day off. So, if you had a family vacation planned to go see Yellowstone and/or to go to California, you had plane tickets bought, and you plowed snow on Christmas and missed your family Christmas, and then you did that vacation, and then you wanted to take one day off. I mean, I just, I don't know.
And again, that's why we put this out in January, and we've been very fair if there were, you know, and you can ask the gentleman out there, if there were vacations already purchased to be done.
I have asked a lot of them, actually.
If there were vacations already purchased to be done, we tried to honor those already purchased. If things popped up, we've tried to honor those. The first step of this grievance, if you're denied, you're to go talk to the director himself. That never happened. So, the first step of the grievance process was never even followed, according to this very contract. So, at that point, what are we really doing here? So, we're not going to follow the first step.
Six days for him to even find out if he could get it off or not.
But that's within the parameters of the contract itself, then seven days.
That would seem crazy to me if I was asking my job.
That's kind of my concern when I saw this on there. I think I have thought similar to Dan's is to have a grievance come to the council seems to be outside of the normal parameters of union negotiation, union, the whole process that...
Mr. McKenzie, this has been in the contract since the original. I believe it was 1978 this agreement was first developed.
And you stated it's only happened three times in the 20...
Last 21 years I've been involved representing these folks. This is only the third time I've been here.
Tells me that is the exception, not the rule. So...
And we hold...
I don't see this hitting the level of an exception at this point, I guess, is my concern, that there is another process here that...
Yes.
Staff has put together the parameters.
Go ahead, Dan. I'm sorry.
To me, what was put forward seems to fit with the language of the contract, it being within management's scope of authority. Yeah, it just, to me, the process seems like we're jumping ahead one step in the process here, at least, if not two. And I would rather see it go back to some type of arbitration or better discussion between the two groups. Let James run that, and then if it can't, then it does go to arbitration, and only if and after that, it would come to the council.
Well, let me clarify an item that I brought up.
Yeah, because I'm assuming this is the process, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Well, it's part of the process. We have eliminated a lot of grievances. You haven't seen us, because we've eliminated a lot of them by trying to take care of the problems as they're developing. The union reserves the right to file a grievance at any time in step, but it still has to go with the union representative meeting with the city administrator in step two. So, we have done this process several times and eliminated grievances prior. That was what our hope. This is kind of, to me, when it comes to the bigger issue, I don't think this is the grievance that were, that's really the vehicle to address the bigger issue. The problem we have here is this individual requested one day off on a day that was not a day that was going to interrupt. This is the least day of any interruption of a person requesting a day off. The reason he's being denied is because it doesn't fall into the new policy. When the new policy came out, there wasn't a grievance. The grievance didn't happen until someone was denied. That was the grievance, when there was action on the new policy, and that's why the grievance came up. The reason the grievance was filed the day it was, is I was still trying to talk to the grievance about talking them out of filing the grievance. We ran out of timeline. We had to initiate the grievance because I met with James that day. That was the last day. So, there's a bigger issue here we would like to work out. I ain't saying, or the union and the group is not saying that the employer does not have the right to promulgate rules. However, being fair and just in the process, it cannot conflict with the language in the contract. And that's where we feel this kind of conflicts, when states also will not be unreasonably denied. That's where the conflict is. And again, we may need to have an arbitrator give us a final definition. That was part of James' discussion. But our part of the process, it does have to come to you before we get to that next step.
Okay. I think we've kind of defined the issue. If you're all comfortable, let's go with the motion, and we can do a little follow-up discussion after we get a motion in a second.
I would move that we affirm the public work summer leave request policy and deny the union grievance.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Motion second. David?
When was the grievance filed? I'm sorry.
On the 25th, April 25th.
Which is ironic, because we actually met on the 26th, that Wednesday.
Oh, I got the wrong date.
The letter was actually predated from the time we met.
Yeah.
At that point in time prior, I had not received a written agreement as far as outlining what the process was prior to our meeting. Again, steps were not followed as outlined in this contract. We want to get technical about it, and an arbitrator will, and were not followed. So, if you want to go to arbitration, that's why we have labor attorneys. I don't have a problem with that as well. We'll certainly work prior to that to do that if we can. But if they tell us this is not correct, then it's not. But I believe we acted within the contract. I believe we have the right to dictate when hours can and cannot be worked and deny vacation. Those you at Deere do not have shut down, and you will take your vacation at that time. Other companies do it as well. This is not uncommon.
It wouldn't be appropriate for us to discuss.
Of course not. But I'm saying, other companies do this very thing.
I don't actually work at John Deere, so I can say, but that's not how it works.
I would not allow Jennifer Mine to take off three weeks during the budget, because that's the core time of year for her job. And this is the same practice as trying to get core services done for the city.
But would you allow her to take one day?
Okay.
Possibly. Depends on where we are in the budget.
I guess my point is, I've worked in IT my whole life, and so, I'm on call 24/7, 365 on my current job. You know, we go through shifts where you're on call for two weeks, another someone else takes two weeks, and you get calls at midnight. And so, I kind of know how these guys get called in the middle of the night, and it's just snowplow to fix, you know, pumps that go down, sewage backups, all kinds of stuff. But the same thing with IT, with servers going down and all that kind of thing. So, but if I need to take a vacation day, as long as I found someone else that was willing to swap a day with me and have coverage, you know, my employer never had a problem with that. So, as long as there was adequate coverage during that time, even though I was technically the one on call, you know, as long as you could figure some way out to have it covered so that the business could keep running, everything was covered, you know, nothing missed a beat, my employer always has allowed that. And so, I guess that's where I struggle with this.
Well, this is not towards these three individuals, as I said. It's a policy we put in place. We're just enforcing the policy. It's not directed at them individually.
I totally understand that.
It's nothing about that.
This is the case that's in front of us right now that we're...
And that's what I'm saying. We denied it based on the policy put in place in January, not about the individual, the office.
But then also, that last sentence says you can basically do whatever the heck you
want, too.
I think we've defined the issue fairly well. All in favor? Okay. No, okay. Go ahead if you're not comfortable.
I'm not even sure what we... So, my primary concern is, you know, it's a busy Monday, trying to do my day job, and I get an email, and now I'm asked to, you know, I'm hearing people with a whole lot more experience in this, talking about, you know, this might be, this might cause a precedence. You know, I've got an employee that I would, you know, a group of employees that I would automatically side with in this type of situation, because I don't have time to, or I didn't have the ability or the background of the time to make a decision on something that could be a bigger issue than we think. In fact, I'm not even sure we should have talked about this today, because we didn't get all the information in time. And that's my concern, is we didn't get the information. I would almost technically wonder if this followed our open meeting rules.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Folks, this is part of procedure. Yes, it was originally designed for the council to understand what's going on on labor management issue. But quite frankly, this is a bigger issue, and it's something that James and I, I believe, needs to work on more with the labor management process. So, I don't agree with the policy as how it's being implied. This is not the only time off has been denied. We have another gentleman who was requested and denied, but it was because, he was denied because they have work scheduled out that day. We ain't got a problem with that. It wasn't because of a policy. It was because of the work process and what needed to be there, just like James was talking about for that other individual. So, I don't agree with the policy and such and how it's being applied. I think it conflicts with contract language. But as far as council, feel free to deny it so we can process, move forward with the process. We may end up being able to work something out yet, instead of going to an arbitrator. That's our wish. That's how we've done things in the past with employees here at Waverly. But don't feel bad if you feel need to deny this. This is part of the process.
I guess one thing I'll say before we vote is that it's awkward for me, because I'm, as everyone probably knows, the most conservative Republican up here by far. I don't even believe we should have unions in this country, but I'm going to vote in favor of this person because that's the way I feel. It should be... Our employees do so much that if he wants one day off and he has it covered, in the, when I work in, you know, every job I've ever worked, as long as I can have someone cover it, I usually always get that day off. So, others who vote completely opposite me and are completely opposite spectrum might vote differently, but as someone who has my world point of view, I'm still supporting this. So, that's, says something to me, I guess, but...
The policy that was dated January 31st, 2017, is that within the union contract? So, the contract approved this policy, or how does that work?
No, the city develops, the city developed the policy on top of the contract since the contract was negotiated.
So, how does, so how does that work? If you're, if you're working within a union contract and there's a policy on top of that, do you have to abide by this policy, or how does that work?
Yes, if it doesn't conflict with the contract language.
Okay.
And that's what we're saying. This policy is viewed as conflicting with contract language.
And we don't believe it does. So, that's the grievance.
And that's what Dan was, I think, you were very articulate about in your first comment. That's what you were saying, if that's true, then...
Okay. All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no?
No. No. And I preference that with just the timing of this. We, we're not prepared to vote on this.
Passes, 4-2.
I would agree. It makes it very hard when you get information on Monday at...
Regular business item number nine is mayoral appointments. I'd like to bring before you Lance Gritters for the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have an opening there, and Lance is a lawyer in town, and he's... We have an opening there, and Lance is a lawyer in town, and he's well-qualified to sit on this commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the mayoral appointment?
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Just a question on, as far as gender balance, is this impact gender balance as far as how we're doing on commissions?
My gender balance personally?
Quite a few women on there.
I know that that board has quite a few. I'm just trying to remember who was off and...
Yeah, replaces Bill Wilson.
Okay.
Yeah, it was all, that's a good question, yeah, thank you, thank you.
We've had to do a lot of work in trying to keep, keep some of that, maintain that.
We do try to keep that.
I want to say there are at least four women on there.
Yeah, there's quite a few, but it's supposed to be...
Other discussion?
Came on count.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no, unanimously approves, welcome, Lance. We have board minutes from the Bremer-Waverly Law Board for April 10th to approve. Any comments officially received? Leisure Services Commission minutes for April 20th, any comments officially received? Waverly Senior Center calendar, comments officially received? Staff comments?
I don't believe we have any, sir.
Okay, then we will move to city council comments.
I don't have any, thank you.
Lampe? Resnick?
No.
Kengis?
Uh, yeah, one item, just coming up in discussion. The legislature has approved and the governor signed the ability to sell fireworks in the state, and it's kind of left up to cities to determine whether they're permitted within city limits. And so, I've noted that from the news that other cities have started to take up that issue, and I just wondered if that's something that we should, as a council, put on a study session to discuss, or at least have Bill or Rich or somebody start to kind of think about, you know, what approach we should have on, on that.
It's your pleasure here.
Well, I'm just one, so that's...
Just bringing up on our city comments, thank you. Dan?
Two things. I just want, I'm wondering why there is a pedestrian crosswalk warning sign on Bremer and Sixth, when there's no recreation path there, there's no school there. Confused as to why we would put a sign there.
Sixth, West...
That where the bike path crosses?
West Bremer, there is no legal recreation path that crosses by subway and Quick Star there, but we put a sign there.
If you're referring to like a pedestrian trail, they don't have to be a pedestrian trail. We have them up at Warburg, we have them down by Memorial Park, we have them where it's customary to have higher volumes of pedestrian crossings.
They could be up at any crosswalk. They could be up at any crosswalk.
Yes.
But we're treating this path... We all know it's illegal to have it be a recreation path by the way we funded it, so...
No, it's not.
Oh, yes, it is, we went over this. It was funded through FUD, blood mitigation, which makes it illegal to create recreation.
In our application, they thought it was great that it would double as a recreational trail and greenbelt. There's nothing illegal about it.
Yes, it is. If you count it as a recreational path, it is. I actually talked...
Number, number two?
Well, I've just read the language straight from the state of Iowa, so it's illegal. Um, so I just wondered why it was there. Number two, I guess, James, I've sent you like five to seven emails over the last probably three or four weeks. I haven't got any reply back on. Just wondering if I could get some stuff on that, there's two...
On what topic?
Two different topics. One was, am I going to make it remember? Tab was on one, and Tab replied, it was about Warburg and the W and recreation. You never replied to any of those. Tab just sent like a one-sentence reply back. You'd remember them. And then, what was the other one? I can go look and forward them to if you want, but...
That'd be great.
Usually, if I copy you, it kind of means I want your input, so...
Thank you. I wanted to compliment the city on the great progress we're making in terms of handling inconvenience in the downtown area and also shopping, reminding the town how important it is to the businesses to have the support when there's a little bit of inconvenience in reaching the locations involved. But I think that the patience of everyone is being felt. I don't, not getting any feedback of any problems. We're traversing the town very comfortably in terms of going from Third Street over. So, I think that we're off to a good, good start in reconstruction. It can get more complicated, I think, as we go on, but this is a wonderful start. But we need to thank, and I need to thank the city for supporting the businesses and making this work. It's going to be a great advance for the town. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Adjourned.